Will the Wissickens School District Board of Directors please come to order? Jerkosh, please conduct a roll call of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. Mr. Badger?
President.
Mrs. David?
Here.
Mrs. Di Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Frank?
Ms. Greenstein?
Here.
Mrs. Hayman?
Here.
Mr. Stoloff?
Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Antonio?
Here.
A present, one absent.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America. The Republic has one nation, God, all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the October 29th, 2018 Public Meeting of the Wissickens School District Board of Directors. I'd also like to note that prior to this meeting, the board met, Decade of Session, to discuss personnel and legal matters. Item two is a list of public meetings of the past month. And item three in our agenda is a list of upcoming meetings over the next month. And presentations, we don't have any standalone presentations, although I know we have a few that will be part of the committee reports later in our agenda. With that, we are at the first of two public comment periods on our agenda. And this first one is for public comment on agenda items only. On agenda items only, while the second public comment period is open for any school-related topic, latter part of the agenda. And also, please note, the instructions for speakers are included in the agenda document. I have any speakers? So, moving on to the report of the Board President. And I don't have any facial items or review voting items for the month. So, on to the report of the Superintendent. Jim?
Thank you. There's one item. As many of you know, we had an unfortunate event last night where it was brought to our attention that a high school student had made some very serious and threatening comments towards another student. And once this was brought to our attention, we, as best we could, this was late night, Sunday night, did as best we could to investigate and certainly hand over the matter to law enforcement, once it was, the threat was determined to be credible. We sent a short message out last night to families because this matter had evidently hit the social media airwaves, which, airwaves is kind of like an old phrase that doesn't even exist anymore, social media circles. And as it turns out, many, many students and families knew, as much as we did, in some cases, knew things that weren't true, and we felt like we should get a small message out last night, followed up this morning by a detailed message. And indeed, the matter is an ongoing, both legal and law enforcement matter, but currently not, and won't be.
Thanks, Jim. One note I should make is that, on item six, report of the Board President, I believe on the agenda there was a mistake, and there was an item that was listed as student board representatives, and that's an item that we are deferring to, back to the policy. Okay, moving on to item eight, report of the Assistant Superintendent, Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. I'd like to take this opportunity this evening to acknowledge the students, faculty, staff, and administration of Shady Grove Elementary School. This fall, Shady Grove was recognized for its second time as a reward high-progress school. Shady Grove is among the highest 5% of the Title I Pennsylvania schools who've met all four growth targets on the administration of the 2018 PSSA in English Language Arts and Mathematics. Those four factors, those four targets include test participation rate, academic growth for all students, academic growth for special education students, and academic growth for English language learners. Those specific sub-populations and the total population met all four. So congratulations to Mr. Albanese, his staff, and the students of Shady Grove.
Thanks, Gary. Okay, report of the Solicitor, Jeff?
I have no specific item, other than, yes, no items under 15D. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Report of the Board Secretary, Wade?
I believe we're going to refer to those items when we get to 15D.
Wade, I think with the new format, you would just review those items as part of your...
Okay, under 15D, we will be presenting the approval of the Policy Committee Meeting Minutes, the Special Public Board Meeting Minutes, the Work Session Public Meeting Minutes, the Regular Public Board Meeting Minutes, and the Policy Meeting Minutes that are referred to in documents D1 through D5. If there are any questions, we'll be happy to go through them, but they'll be up for a vote at the next meeting.
Yeah, and again, to clarify, starting with this school year, restructured the board meeting such that the first meeting of, not exactly the month, of a two-week cycle is a review and discussion of all agenda voting items, and then following meeting, a week later, is when we actually then vote on those items that have been... There will be no voting on any agenda items that we're discussing. Okay, Wade, report of the Board Treasurer?
Presented is the information regarding September financial information, or their treasurer's report, E1. Again, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll have that presented for approval at the next meeting.
Thanks. Now, moving on to Board Committee Reports. Patients, Ronnie?
Okay, I have the results of the calendar survey. We sent that out to parents, staff, and students. The question that the survey asked was, when would you most prefer the Wissickens School District to begin its... The results, the choices were always before Labor Day, always after Labor Day, and that would add, that would add four days at the end of the year, or it would be date-dependent. If Labor Day is after September 3rd, then school starts before Labor Day. If Labor Day is on or before September 3rd, begins after. So, we received 3,839 replies.
Wow.
Parents preferred, 48% of the parents preferred that we start after Labor Day. 46% of the students preferred that we start after Labor Day. I don't think that was a surprise. And 29% of the staff said that they would prefer after Labor Day. For Labor Day, the parents were 30%, the students were 30%. And then the date-dependent answer, 23%, 25%, and the staff, 32%. Are the results.
So, seems like, seems kind of like there's a clear preference for starting school year after Labor Day. One thing that'll be interesting, though, is that in some years, Labor Day can actually be September 7th, right? Is it 7th? In those years, we would actually start school on...
Well, that would be...
Right. And I think this is, this was important for us to consider, because I think on our current policy, does it say it always starts before Labor Day? Yeah, and so we were looking, as part of our policy review process, to determine if we needed to change that language. We were going to change it, like, how would we actually...
But what?
Yeah. Yeah, as we said before, I think, in a previous meeting, at the end of the day, it's up to the board to determine which direction to go, but I think we all valued hearing what some of our key constituents were in like, item. So, very interesting to me, and I know my kids are all for the after Labor Day option.
Not surprising, and not surprising that the teachers want to come in before, because those last...
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
So, Jim, I think we're going to be reviewing school calendar for next year and the year after, I'm assuming, maybe November, December? Am I correct?
Correct, in that we don't have anything in place yet for 1920, or 2021 either. We had one, but I was able to add this.
For clarification, do we have to have in policy that it's specifically this or that?
Have to.
Okay, so we can leave it, the language a little bit more open, so that it could change sometime in the future without having to have a policy change?
Policy. In order to get something in place, this, placed for 1920, we need to change the policy. Perhaps I won't, I won't inject my thoughts on this matter now, but at some point in time, we're going to have to get a draft calendar out. And if, if, if it's, if, if the staff administration come up with one, it's going to be during Labor Day, because that's recommending. But if the board wants to change the policy, then that's okay, too.
Well, right now, the policy has written, fire us to start before Labor Day. So, I think this is something I think the policy guys could consider, like, we could take off that requirement and just flexible, or we could specify always after Labor Day. But there's pros and cons, I'm sure, around.
And again, I think that we could leave it flexible, because it may change depending upon the date, and I can understand the rationale of the administration and staff wanting to, you know, preferring before Labor Day. I can understand that. And, you know, but given realities of when the school year would end, because I don't know, Ronnie, did we actually ask parents how they thought about the school year ending at the end of June? Because, exactly, so, I mean, I think that the ramifications of starting on the 9th, which could potentially be even the 10th, by the way, of September, well, 7th was a
First Monday, it's always the first Monday.
You're right, you're right. But starting even the 8th would end school another week late, or even two weeks later, so.
Well, I think they said if we go later, that end...
Yeah.
So, right now, we generally end area of 18th, 19th, 20th, somewhere around there, is usually where our...
That late?
Or was it the...
What do we do, though, with additional snow days? They're tacked on, right? It could... So if it was a particularly snowy year, we'd already be ending later than that.
I would say we have a policy meeting on, scheduled for November 12th, that maybe we bring this up, talk about it, and policy meetings, if want to change the policy now that's in place for this upcoming calendar draft.
Change it to make it more general, you mean?
Yeah, I think that would be fine.
That's number, just to be clear, that's policy 803, so that'll be, batch that in with all of the zeros.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, on the Policy Committee, but will not be able to attend that meeting on the 12th.
When is the latest patient have... By 19?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that we'll start getting inquiries from parents about that, believe it or not, on... So, we've, we've been telling people we're putting off until this. I can, I could literally take 10, create a calendar. I do need a direction.
Well, I think Jeff is asking, like, how late, how late would you be?
What's the deadline for the board?
Uh... Yeah. We have a meeting on this... We're going to January. I mean, it's just a matter of how much we wanted to say to the, to the parents, well, you got to wait until he hashes out.
Can the Policy Committee, if it proposes a change to the policy, then bring that up at the next meeting, so that we can vote on the new policy, and at the same time, vote on a start date for the 20th? Can we do all of that at that time, or no?
It'd have to be a first reading of the policy change, and a second reading. And once it's policy, then we can calendar that.
So then, if we wanted to go the route of flexibility, allowing for a start after Labor Day, and essentially, we'd have to go through a first reading of policy change, and then a second reading of policy change, then we're looking at January, February? Or we could approve...
When, when are our meetings?
If the Policy Committee decides to change the policy, that could be decided on the 11th. First reading's going to be in December.
The board, the board does have the option of waiving a reading if it so desires. So if you want to accelerate the decision, or it's unified in that process, I do believe that sooner that that gets communicated, fewer issues you may have in the planning of your next year.
Yeah.
So, when is our board meeting after the 12th? When is our first? November 26th?
November 26th.
And that's...
That's a...
Works.
A work session.
Then, remember...
Whatever the next Monday is in December, the first Monday in December.
So that would be when we could... So we could technically have this...
If that's the case, Jim, then we could have calendar before us in January? Okay, well, that'd be on your radar for policy meetings. Great. Okay, Ronnie, anything else?
The world was listening to me automatically, sorry about that. All right. So, some of the more crucial is the approval of a comprehensive plan. And Gary, would you be the man to discuss that?
Yeah, so, at our last month's meeting, I pointed out that we have our draft of our comprehensive plan that went on public review. The requirement that it's on public review for a 28-day period. That requirement was met on October 24th. I have prepared a document that I shared with you, the board members, for, so you can see the total document. And at the next meeting on the 5th of November, I will be asking for the board's approval of that. If so approved, then Dr. Chrisfield and Mr. Antonio would be asked to electronically sign that document, so that it would be submitted in advance of November 30th, 2018, to the Pennsylvania Department of Education.
Okay, thank you. And are we going to have John do his presentation now on the, on the new student information software?
No, there was no intended presentation. We provided, he provided a report to the board, giving the specifics of the switch from Sapphire, a student information system, to Infinite Campus, with a pretty thorough, I think, vetting of the reasons why that is being done. Mr. McGowan is present this evening, should there be a question by board members with regard to that shift from one system to another. It is a focus that we've been looking at for multiple years now. This is not a new idea to switch. There's been some concern about the current provider, and we were looking to improve with enhanced features that are offered by Infinite Campus. Unless there are any additional questions specific on this report, we're going to be proposing that that be approved at the November 5th meeting as well.
And before we go on, could I ask John one question? The, the net cost for the, the new system, which is from Infinite Campus, is, the net costs, once the system is up, would that be less, more, or the same as that we're now, now paying?
Once we're fully implemented, an apples-to-apples comparison of what we're currently running versus there, it'll be a difference of, we're going from 109,000 to roughly 77,000. So it is a net decrease.
Are you saying it's down?
New product is much cheaper than what we are paying now.
And from what I've read of your report, it has a lot more features, is a lot more stable, and a lot more support?
Yes, sir.
So it's cheaper and better? Would that be a fair description?
It is.
So, any further arguments?
I played the Mega Millions, and apparently the luck ran out after that, so...
All right, thank you very much, John.
Oh, John, I have a question also, if I may. How would you characterize the learning curve on the new software? Is it going to be substantial, or is it pretty intuitive?
I believe, at this point in time, most SISs have a pretty base user interface, so I don't see too much worry with that. One of the things I'm very impressed with, though, for Infinite Campus, is that they're going to have a project manager come in and meet with all the constituents, you know, nurses, special ed, develop timelines for training and implementation, but also delve into our workflows in all the departments, too, to find out, you know, hey, how do you do things? And our software can probably help with some efficiencies there, so, you know, an implementation's going to be bumpy, just because it's changed, but I don't see anybody panicking that they're, they're not going to know how to use it.
Hey, John, I just wanted to commend you for the report that you put together on the information system vision. It was well-laid out, with a lot of good information, without being overwhelming. I think it structured the decision, and how you guys arrived at it very cleanly, so...
Thank you.
All right, so, these will be voted on at the next meeting, is that correct? Okay, thank you, then.
Okay, next up is the Facilities and Transportation Committee. Gracie?
Thank you. So there are two things for informational items for the facilities and transportation. First is A5 security vestibule preparation.
Thank you. I'd like to present Kevin Gottschall of Gottschall Kane O'Rourke, GKO Architects. They're, I think you really could call them expert at security vestibules. And the board, if you remember, hired GKO in order to accomplish vestibule projects at Blue Bell, Lower Gwinnett, and Stony Creek. As part of that approval, there was a requirement to come back to the board, and before we went forward with the actual creation of the documents, to do a presentation to the board, in case there are any questions or concerns that we then would incorporate into the documents as they were going to be developed. Kevin will do the presentation tonight, and we appreciate all your input. It's a very, very positive project, and we're excited to, to get going on it. So Kevin, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, tonight, we're here to talk about Blue Bell, Lower Gwinnett, and Stony Creek Elementary Schools. And I was, I'm sure you're all aware, they all have secure vestibules right now. What we're trying to do is enhance those. We're trying to bring trans, transaction windows into those, similar to the way the Shady Grove is arranged. So we're looking for an opportunity, walk in, for a person, a visitor, to walk into that secure vestibule, to be able to give their driver's license through a transaction counter, to have office staff be able to scan that driver's license and issue a badge, all that happening before they leave the secure vestibule. That's what we're trying to implement at the three elementary schools that we're looking at for this year. So the first one we're going to talk about is Blue Bell. This is the existing plan of Blue Bell, as it stands right now. You have the single vestibule and a door directly into the administration. We're proposing that that vestibule would be split in half. There's another goal here. Human nature is that if you're walking through a pair of doors, you hold the door for the next person coming. When it's a secure vestibule, that's not a great arrangement. So we're trying to split these vestibules in half. Visitors enter through one door. If you're looking at the plan, that would be the secure entrance and the door to the left. Students enter through the other door. So in the morning, they would come in there, at a certain point, that would be locked, but anyone leaving the building is going to exit through the student entrance, not through the secure vestibule where visitors are coming in. Thereby, hopefully, nobody's holding the door for the next person in. You can see that we've included a transaction window and rearranged the office area, so one of the reception stations has a transaction window, they can interact with a visitor coming in. We want to make sure that there's a shelf unit within that secure vestibule. If a parent's coming in to drop off an instrument that a student forgot, or a backpack, they can just lay it on the shelf. They don't have to go through the bother of producing a driver's license and being let into the building. They can just drop that off on what we have indicated there. If my eyes are correct, that's a E is the little shelf unit that's in the secure vestibule. And if they're coming in to actually visit someone, they have a meeting there, they're meeting with a staff person, then after they have their interaction with, through the transaction window, and they're given a badge, they can be buzzed into the administration area and into the... Second school is Lower Gwinnett. Again, there is a secure vestibule. This one has the benefit that that secure vestibule is separate from the main entrance into the school. What we're essentially proposing is that we would just extend that secure vestibule into the administration area, create that transaction window, and again, a locked door into the office area, that after a person has issued their badge, they can be buzzed into that office area. In this particular case, we also have waiting chairs right in the vestibule. Depending on how you want to arrange your security, possibly people sit right in that secure vestibule area until an administrative person comes forward, or a staff member comes forward, to escort them to wherever they're going into the building. The last project is at Stony Creek. And right now, again, we have the single vestibule, there's a door immediately to your left that, after you interact with staff people, you're buzzed into the administration through that. We're proposing a more significant reorganization of this. Another problem that Stony Creek has is that the office staff can't see the front of the building. They can't see the sidewalk, they can't see the approach to the building. In an ideal situation, those staff members would be able to see what's happening in front of the school. They would see the people walking up to the front of the school, not just in the little window after they've hit the intercom system. So we're reorganizing the main office, so that those staff positions have an exterior wall, and we're adding a window onto the front of the building, so they'll be able to see the entire approach up to those doors. Same approach as the other schools, the vestibule is divided in half. The door to the left is a secure vestibule, students enter the building to the right, and of course, they would exit through that same vestibule. Transaction window to the office area, and again, a shelf to drop off anything that a, that a student forgot, and a couple of waiting chairs in there as well. The principal's office obviously gets reconfigured here, and one of the complaints about that particular principal's office is that right now, they cannot see what's happening in the front of the schools, or in the reception area. So we included in this a glass wall, so that the principal can see into the main office area, can monitor what's going on, can see people coming and going, and students coming and going. So based on these very preliminary sketches, we put together some budget numbers. I'm not necessarily saying that this is what the projects are going to come in at. We're going to work very hard to try to reuse as much of the existing equipment as we can, and make, be as cost-effective as we can with our approach, as, as much as possible. Right now, we're introducing the numbers as a range, because we're very early in the process. We haven't lifted ceilings, we haven't really dove into these projects very much. We're carrying contingencies on all these numbers, but we're expressing them in a range. So Blue Bell, somewhere between 110 and 130, Lower Gwinnett, 65,000 to 85,000. Stony Creek is obviously where the money is, and that's because we're completely rearranging that administration area. We're changing the reception area, and as well as the principal's office. We are suggesting that we would carry a construction contingency for anything that would come up during the project, that's just good practice. We have a number in for permits and inspections, and that takes us into a range of somewhere around 560,000 to 660,000 dollars. Now, again, we will work to try to be as cost-effective and to get those numbers as low as we can. But our recommendation is, in terms of what we budget today, that would be a reasonable budget number to go forward with, yes?
I have a question. That, that, Bill, parents, a bookbag or a package, put on the shelf, not have to check in?
Right.
At the bags, Bonnie could just put a package, not...
So you'd have to correct me, but if, if you could go back to that, I think it's slide number three. So, to get into the secure vestibule, aren't you going to have to have some type of a buzzer system?
Correct. It'll be the same arrangement you have now.
Right. So it's not going to be an open door to that first area, so theoretically, you know, we're hopeful that whoever it is that's going to be buzzing in, that person from the outside into the inside, would have some ideas to, you know, whether the person is a parent or otherwise. So if you're a parent, you want to leave off a bookbag, you know, that's probably going to be something that's going to be acceptable. If you're a person who has no... If you're a person who has no connection to the building, that person may not even be able to get entrance to the building at all.
I have, oh, I'm sorry. Is supposed to know every person who's, suppose it's a grandmother or a grandfather or an uncle that they never saw before.
Yeah, but they'd have to identify themselves. I'm Mary Smith, I'm here to drop off my grandson Joey Smith's bookbag. And the people in the front office of the elementary schools, pretty much, no, almost every kid.
But that, my comment came because you said they don't even have to check in, all they have to do is leave it. That's why I'm asking this question.
I think, I think you raise an excellent point. But I would suggest that whether a parent drops a bookbag on that shelf or gets buzzed into the administration and drops that bookbag, the issue that you're bringing up might be the same either way. If there is something in that bookbag, that.
I think the point is excellent as well. Right now, the practice is in many schools to allow that drop off to occur, which many schools believe is minimized based on the fact that the entrance into the building is going to be controlled to a certain extent just based on whether or not they should, whether they are recognized or whether they have any intent or need to be in the building at all. In truth, you raise very, very good points and we could discuss that and whether we should eliminate that as a procedure because we're currently doing that at one of our buildings. However, all that would do in changing this design, which we're putting forward, would really be eliminating, I think it's K on the right-hand side, which would be the elimination of a shelf or something. If you eliminate that, then frankly, they won't be able to drop anything else unless they also do the raptor system check and then they'd be able to drop off something.
I have, I guess I have a number of questions. What is, what information do we have that our current system at these three schools is inefficient? Have we had problems to show that the existing systems of checking in folks are insufficient to the point that we need to spend this sum of money to make a correction for a problem that perhaps doesn't exist? I did visit all of the schools when I first got on the board and I found them harder to get into than any school I've ever seen, including any of the districts where I've worked and even, you know, very recently. So I'm not clear what's driving this, that's number one. Number two, I think there's often an attempt in our crazy society where people can come into any building, a synagogue, a church, a school, unfortunately armed and dangerous. More often than not, those folks are not even coming in the front door. And more often than not too, there's nothing that would tell us that a student or a parent who could be insane, comes in, has an ID, is legit and walks in and anyway creates havoc. So I'm just not sure what the purpose is of the spending of this money if we already have systems in place to check folks in before they're able to enter the buildings.
To a certain extent, I think we are reacting to society and how things have happened and then also parent wishes. So, you know, we didn't do a survey, we didn't, you know, try to quantify it in a poll, but generally what we heard at the elementary schools was, why is it that the other schools, which at this point was three of the other schools, have, you know, a double entry system as opposed to the three schools that we talked about tonight? You know, from a safety and security standpoint, the administration certainly believes that these are safer than what they currently have, which is why we brought it forward and frankly, why we also received permission from the board to develop these to the point where we're bringing them to you tonight. The costs are pretty much in line with what I think, you know, at least administration was expecting. And, you know, in comparison to the middle school, the middle school was more expensive than all of these put together in order to create a safer entrance. So that's why, you know, we're talking tonight and if there's five folk that don't believe that we should go forward, that's perfectly acceptable, but that's why we are here tonight. Thank you.
So I have a question on, I think it's Blue Bell and maybe? So the front entrances now are much wider, more doors, and then we're kind of cutting them in half vestibule. What, I'm sure that we've taken this higher and emergency exit type of thing. Have we looked into that, everything's fine with that, I'm assuming?
We, we will. At this point, we have not yet, but the same thing at Shady Grove, we wound up taking doors out from what was there. And about this phase, when the district decided to go forward, I believe it was the first thing we did was to contact the township and in that case, did a complete code study showing all egress paths and capacities to verify to them that what we were doing met code and they agreed. And then, and then we went forward with the project. We will do the same thing here.
Is the proposed architectural fee, which I think was 22,000, is that based on a percentage of what the expected cost of construction is?
For a project of this size, no, it was just based on the hours it takes to produce them.
Thank you.
Wade, the costs for these projects, were they, are they factored into our capital plan?
It's a great question. I, I don't believe they are. I think that they are not included in the five-year plan. They were, they were discussed in general, but I don't think we quantified them.
Then I think, kind of to Debbie's point, these are costs that we hadn't been, that costs that weren't on our radar for the last couple of years, kind of just recently came on our radar. Then we got to where we're at. But in order to accommodate this, I assume we're gonna be taking funds out of the Capital Reserve, right?
Yes.
So by, if we went forward with funding these projects, then that just displaces other stuff that's currently.
Correct.
But at this point, you haven't made a difference about what would be displaced?
To be honest with you again, it is my belief that we're gonna be able to afford everything that we currently have on our plan.
I thought that one of the long-term items on the plan though was an auditorium for the middle school, which was determined to be unaffordable.
Right, at the cost that was, the cost on the master plan was 6 million. The cost estimate that came back was 9 million. So I think it would be affordable at 6, but I personally wouldn't recommend that at 9.
And how about the renovation for the library at the high school?
That is on there.
And will remain on there even with this work being done?
Yes.
Wait.
So Wade, just to recap, what's the decision point here?
The decision point is if the board didn't like these plans as creating safety and secure vestibules, then we would go back to the drawing board. If the board does not particularly want to accomplish them regardless of the plans, we would not go forward. If the board is accepting of these plans as creating secure vestibules in general with the cost estimates as provided, there is no real vote needed. It's just that we would proceed to the design stage. Then we would come back to the board after the bids have been developed and bid and we would present to the board the actual costs of the projects and the board would make a decision as to whether or not they want to proceed with any or all of the projects.
Would you anticipate construction this coming summer or is?
Right, so the very, very good news with regard to Jerry's work, GKO's work and the board's support is that we do all these projects so early in the year. So we're in a great position to develop these projects so that we can get out to bid, weigh in and advance of summer construction timeframes. So yes, that is the anticipation.
Wade, one final thing. Prior to the next meeting, can you circulate an updated version of the capital plan that includes these costs? Makes adjustments for these costs?
Sure.
Thanks.
So if there are board members that have additional concerns, please circulate them to me, send them to me or to Tracy and we'd be happy to react to them as we go forward. You know, at this point, the true cost to the board is 22,700, which is GKO's fees. And, you know, at a minimum, if we don't hear from the board otherwise, then we'll proceed to the design stages and we'll get bids and at that point, the board can decide whether they want to proceed individually on those projects or all together. And thank you very much and thank you. I forgot to mention as well, one of the nice things about GKO is that they are local, right there in Ambler and we're very, very happy to be working with them. Thank you.
Yeah.
One last question on this before we leave the topic. Were there other options considered or was this the most cost effective? Was this the best, most secure option? What other things were on the table and are they still options?
We developed a number of schemes. There were variations on this approach, but we did develop a number of schemes for these facilities and we did have a round of meetings with the administration to vet those schemes out, which ones would work, which ones wouldn't. And I think we made some adjustments and brought forward what the administrative team thought was the strongest solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so then the next item, the informational item is the turf field feasibility study. Am I just talking about this Wade?
You had requested that we, you know, get it out there and talk about it.
Okay, so the Athletic Task Force met and we had some discussions on the getting of turf fields. We're looking at a couple of options. One option would be one area of the school, another option would be another area of the school. But what we're looking for right now is a, we're gonna be asking for a feasibility report to be done and that would be probably run about $25,000 to $30,000. But that would include a survey, which a lot of times feasibility reports don't. This one would include a survey, it would talk about the storm water management, which is the main problem with all of our fields. It also would give us a nice footprint, an idea of what it would look like, what we would need and also what other ones are out, like what kinds of turfs are out on the market right now, how long they last and those types of things. So that's something that we would be looking for, for the going forward with the feasibility.
Excuse me, what, what school are these, are you talking about here?
Most likely, these would be at the high school. There was talk of, originally there was talk of one at the middle school, but I don't, are we looking at doing that in the feasibility study Jerry or is it just the high school? The high school? Field one and what? Field one and field nine, 10.
So if I could just accent, so there was discussion from the Athletics Task Force and other folk about, you know, whether the district would benefit from an additional turf field. That's been discussed for probably a couple of years at least in detail. And, and at the last meeting, I think there was a discussion of sort of is what is the next state step? If we were going to proceed with this? And really to get serious about figuring out about whether or not it's feasible for the district, you'd almost have to do this first step, which is going to cost a certain small amount of money, 25,000 to 30,000. And it's going to determine whether or not it's very, very expensive or very inexpensive or whatever from the standpoint of water detention. And that's one of the big things that's going to drive a turf field cost. So, you know, you need an engineer of some type to come in and sort of do some work in order to figure out if it's very feasible at one location and it might not be feasible at all in another and then provide that information to both the board and to the Athletics Task Force to determine whether there's fundraising or other options that are available. And at some point, I think somebody said, well, if we were gonna do that next step, what would it cost? And that's probably a number. So we have a relationship with Dewey Engineering, so we asked Dewey to just give us a ballpark number. The number that you mentioned is the number. And I know that Dewey has done a, in a number of turf fields so that they know generally what to do and how to do it and what it's going to cost in order to come up with that answer. So we're not asking for approval tonight, I think was really just a discussion item.
For clarification, and I know nothing about building playing fields, but if you're building a turf field, right, I think you were just mentioning this, you still have to divert the water. Okay, so either way, we're gonna have to figure out a better way of handling the water management of the field so they're not soaking wet all the time.
Yes.
So if we do that, why do we need a turf field? Playing devil's advocate here, if we fix that problem, why do we in fact need a turf field?
Well, we're still talking about, there's really, you can help divert the water on a regular field. You're still going to have water coming on to grass dirt as opposed to turf. So they are going to still get wet, get muddy, maybe, maybe unplayable. As opposed to, you know, living in the northeastern section of the country, our weather is just getting, it seems to be getting worse and worse and worse. Our teams are not able to get out there. Spring teams aren't out there until, you know, four or five games into this season. Putting everybody behind, you know, other schools are out there for spring training. Our, our teams are not. So it's just something that we wanted to look at. You know, and this feasibility plan would tell us if it's even something that we can move forward with, instead of spinning our wheels thinking about it, can we, can it be done, first of all? How much would it cost? And then, you know, our, as a task force, our next step would, is there a way for us to, and maybe raise some money, help fund something like? But we can't move forward, we can't go to anyone and say, hey, do you guys wanna contribute to a turf field? If we can't even install the turf field where we're looking to install a turf field. So this would be the first step of us being able to move any of it. Yes, yeah, they, that would be one of the things that they would also put in work. There are many fields out there now that, the one field we were looking at was the baseball and softball fields. So you'd actually be able to play baseball and softball game. But those fields would be able to also incorporate soccer, lacrosse, field hockey games. So it would be a much bigger field, but it would also be able to, every kid in the, in the high school that is playing an outdoor sport would be able to play in that area.
If I may interject?
Yeah, please.
So I actually spoke to some of my friends who are soccer players and hockey players and kind of getting to the point of advocate, I guess. Of course, soccer players were four new fields. They said that PW, Upper Moreland and Upper Dublin have extra fields and they found them extremely helpful. But on fall seasons where it's particularly rainy, the field hockey team takes priority over the soccer team because it's a completely different sport on grass versus turf. So this fall, a lot of the field hockey and soccer games were scheduled on the same day, forcing soccer teams to go to the grass fields. But if we were to find another solution to divert the water elsewhere rather than the grass fields and fix that scheduling issue, this might not be offense that.
That's true, or those two sports. Yeah, then you're also, then you're also talking about practice time too. So if you can get teams out there practicing turf fields instead of being indoors, having to practice when there's certain sports that really can't do a whole lot indoors. So that's the other thing to look at. How many kids would actually benefit by having those turf out on them?
Thank you for contributing the student perspective, that's why we want you folks here, so thank you.
Any more questions about the turf? Ability study? You know, I'm glad Janice gave her input and it just reminded me, we didn't even, I didn't even ask either one of you guys about your thoughts on starting school before or after Labor Day. I'm curious, number one, did you actually answer the survey? I'm curious, number one, did you actually answer the survey?
Actually, yes, I did. I did the survey. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I did answer the survey, and as did my family, my mom and my dad, and also my sister was given input. And something that we forgot to take into consideration while answering the survey is the effects on the preseason, the PIA. We did not realize when answering the survey that no matter when school starts, preseason will start at the same time and will not be put back a week later. And I think given that information, a lot of high school families would have changed their answer, because it kind of does cut summer short a lot, kind of taking away time for family vacation and anything else that could be happening. And that information definitely would have changed the vote that we had given, and probably for a number of other families.
It's good to have that information now. I wish we had had it. Well, it's.
Remember, it was so hard to frame those questions. I think you raised an excellent point about that, the athletic piece, there's impact on AP courses. Those test dates aren't moving either, sort of like the season stuff. So, we did consider that in the survey, but we didn't want it to be some long thing where people just get frustrated and quit before they answer. Yeah, definitely a good, awesome.
This would seem to lend more weight to Debbie's approach of giving us flexibility policy as opposed to dictating one way or the other.
And then another thing to consider, too, is, because, you know, I was the same way. Your child is playing a fall sport, start date of, doesn't really matter, because you're here August 16th, or whatever that date is, to start the fall practices. The only thing is, is that it only affects the students that are playing fall sports at the high school and middle school. It doesn't affect any of the elementary kids, and it doesn't affect any of the other kids in the high school or middle school that aren't playing a fall sport.
There's one kid in a family of five, even if there's just one student, the entire family is impacted in terms of vacations. So I guess a lot of spill off, I'm part of that.
Kind of add into that, I used to play a fall sport and then stopped playing, my sister will be playing a fall sport in high school. And my family has a big tradition of going, all of us, our extended family, the last summer. And it's some really difficult, with kind of, that interferes with everything that we've been, and back, kind of, that.
And for the record, I was in the minority and picked the date dependent, the variable one. I was the one weirdo, I guess. Okay, thanks. Is that it for facilities? Okay. And next up, we have the finance committee, David? Oh, I'm sorry.
That is not it. There are a couple of items that will be coming up for vote next meeting. Wade, do you want to do this, or do you want me to just shoot through them? Whatever you want to do.
Either, it's fine.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the first one is sort of the standard discarding and obsoleting of various inventory items. We're locking in our fuel. Number three is, we're going to be hiring Breslin Ridger Fodero in order to do a K through 12 building capacity study in relation to primarily at the beginning, the K to five issues for capacity, but also the six through 12 capacities as well. And the last item is additional administrative services that were required in order to complete the Fab Lab. So this is a bad guy of 24,200 here, but there were no additional contractor costs, so that is the limit of the bad guy on this one.
For either Ally or Jenna, have you guys seen the Fab Lab?
I actually, I have actually. Yeah, I actually have seen the Fab Lab.
Yeah, how's it look?
It looks great, it really does. And I can see how it like benefits the robotics, engineering, any sort of student who can use that.
Wade, I have a question. On these, the Fab Lab administrative, administration services costs at 24,2, that's above and beyond the budget?
I think will still be under budget, but it's above and beyond the original number that we had projected for Breslin.
Okay. But you think will still be under budget?
Yes.
Okay. And my son actually is, has a class in the Fab Lab, and he's also agreed with Ally and said that it was looking really neat. Although those were not his words, so.
It was Fab.
Excuse me, you stole my line, but anyway. A question about why do we have to do this extra, these extra studies in three and four?
So number three is, it's an effort in order to try to come up with a professional capacity to each one of our elementary schools as we look at how we're going to deal with the enrollment capacity. So it's sort of a step into it. We're going to be provided a report, potentially with some discussions of whether or not individual buildings can be enlarged and how they would deal with certain things. Concurrently, we are working with enrollment experts to come up with projections for enrollment, and that will also feed into this study. So that's, that's the third one. The fourth one is really just a reaction to, as with all jobs, you don't have the ability to know all the information. There were certain things that were occurring on site that required us to do additional work, and that's what that is.
Okay, and I think with that, we're done with the facilities. Thanks. Before I move on to finance, I want to give Ally and Jenna, give you guys an opportunity to skedaddle, if you so wish. I appreciate your input tonight. Thanks. All right, finance committee, David?
Thank you, Joe. First, I'll do the second part, which is, is the list of items that will be up for approval next meeting. There are a pair of property assessment appeal settlements we'll be considering, purchase of some sports equipment, uniforms and benches. We'll also be considering the approval of a request to donate to Mr. C Kent Geary, the portrait of his late father, Mr. Clifford Geary, who was the last principal of Ambler High School and the first principal at WHS. And we'll be asking for approval of financial reports and a list of payments. Now, back to item number one, informational item, which we're returning to, is Whittaker Valley Public Library financing needs. Someone prepared to discuss that, Wade? Ann here?
Yeah. So.
So the director of the Whittaker Valley Public Library, Ann Frank, have some comments?
Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Ann Frank, I'm the director, and I brought Ann Hall, who's our Ambler branch manager. So you have both Ann Frank and Annie Hall in the building for your meeting. And I just wanted to say thank you for reconsidering researching the possibility of writing a bond issue for the library. After watching the meeting on the fabulous TVs and on your website, I realized that there were a lot of questions that just weren't answered. And so my point in being here tonight is just to answer those questions for you as you consider it. So the first thing is really about the history, and I believe you received a memo that Wade encouraged me to write and send out to you. And with the history, the two, the Ambler Library and the Whitpain Library actually merged at the request of the school district to make it easier for them to finance those institutions. So that's kind of the reasoning behind it. The school district and the municipalities in our area then created a municipal agreement. I know that was one of Mr. Sultanik's questions, do we have a municipal agreement? And I have a copy here for you. And so that's called the Joint Resolution for the Reorganization of Area Public Libraries. So it was created at the time with a promise to increase level of support to the library. And at the time, when they actually asked them to unify, they felt that a good local public library services are important, educational, informational, and cultural adjunct to the efforts of the school system. So that was kind of the attitude of the school board when this came about. Other issues that I wanted to point out is that a bond issue was executed successfully for the building of the Whitpain Library, our main library now. And one of the biggest reasons for the renovation is to assist the Whittaker School District in early literacy initiatives to help close the entrance gap. As the only free, early literacy provider in our area, we seek to help all children learn to read before they enter the school system. And creating a dedicated educational space will allow the library to increase educational programming, such as storytimes, after-school ESL homework help, and STEM programs. It will create more space for students to do homework and meet with tutors, like we see at our main library. Will enable the school district and the library to partner to create new educational programs for the children of Ambler Borough, West Ambler, and Penland who need help. Currently, we'd had prior Jim had taught an ESL class for parents, but PTO meetings there, but there's no actual dedicated space for all this to happen. So right now, at the main library in Blue Bell, we can provide the students in that area with those. But the children in or near Ambler are missing these opportunities at their only walkable and local library branch. The public is supportive of these planned renovations, and to my knowledge, no one's ever complained about the school assisting the library with tax collection. A bond issue has the possibility to save the library hundreds of thousands of dollars on a $1.6 million loan. Since the school district collects over $1 million in library taxes annually, there's little chance for default. WVPL is happy to pay for the business administrators team's time. We don't want the school district to have any reason to be complained at. We want it, we'll take care of all of that. We'll also pay for any, of course, solicitor-related costs in doing the research. So currently, the tax monies are kept separate from the school districts, and if anyone has concerns about whether any Act One affects any of the tax monies, I'm sure we all feel it should be investigated. And lastly, the public libraries fall under the direction of the Pennsylvania State Department of Education, as do the school districts. We share the same mission, to empower each student to excel in their fullest potential. I want to say thank you for your time and consideration in just listening to this, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
All right. I support the idea that the board support the library. If you remember, we had the discussion when the mere whisper of eliminating librarians from our elementary schools. My favorite term, there were parents out there with pitchforks, pitchforks and torches. And I certainly, this is not quite the same, but the idea that we should always support our libraries. I know many people who happen to be adults who use the facilities, and I've been to the Ambler Library, and it's a very tight space. It needs to expand to better serve the people in our district who need the most services. And the fact that they're willing to pay for all of our costs. And I would think that perhaps we could write in it as a worst-case scenario, if they default, we will repossess the library. Well, I mean, you wouldn't mind that, I don't think, no. But the idea is, I don't think there is, there's too much to lose here. We will, we support our community, we support our libraries, and all of our communities will be supported by this project. And if you could, a little more detail as to what you might be using the funds for.
Okay. So, one of the things in the library is, just to access it, it's not accessible to all. So we have, I know there's a parent that comes a lot that has a walker, and she has to try to lift her walker up like 20 steps to try to get into the building to work with her kids. Parents with strollers have to leave their strollers and belongings outside because they can't get their strollers up and inside the building. So what happens, like at the Blue Bell Library, there are tons of tutors every day after school with parents, and they're looking for places to go and do this. So the library just doesn't have the capacity for that. So what we want to do is create more seating areas, we want to create a designated space so we can have that educational programs. So when we do the ESL tutoring, if there's, say there's 13 kids being tutored, they barely fit in the library, and they're all throughout it. But anyone else in the library has no quiet reading space or anything to look around. If we do a storytime where we have Miss Michelle singing and she can have 60 people in there, you couldn't possibly be in there doing work on the computers because it's so loud in there. There's just no dedicated space. So the biggest part is to add that dedicated space so we can do more educational programs for the kids, as well as provide that access. We're not, we're only, we're looking to expand on our property, we don't want to move out of it. We want it to stay in Ambler. We want it to be walkable for the, for the students that need it the most.
I appreciate your coming in, I mean, as an Ambler resident, and providing us with this additional information, which really, to be honest, changes my mind about my original decision. I visit the library regularly, and it is tight and inaccessible for anyone with disabilities. And no, there's no room really for kids to be working in there. So, with the further information provided, thank you, Ann. I would be in full support.
I'd like to add one more, for, of the, I'm on the five committee. A vital part. Of the library being involved with language, very much equitable.
Thank you, Ronnie. I also serve on that committee, because we're dedicated to trying to, there are daycare centers that people have to pay to send their children to, but there's a lot of people that can't afford to, they have grandparents, and they need those places to take it. We really see a change in people coming in with their kids, more fathers, many more grandparents than you've ever seen before, that need to come to those storytimes, those after-school homework help, tutoring, and things like that at the library. So we just, we don't want to shortchange those students in Ambler. We want to give them the same opportunities that they have in Whitpain.
Ann, if you were to get the $1.6 million bond, or the proceeds from a bond offering from us, the library then would have to make principal and interest payments on that, on that bond. I think it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of about $100,000 a year. Has that been factored into your operating budget? I mean, how are you going to be able to absorb that additional cost on it?
That's a good question. We're going to be meeting with a financial advisor, actually, this Friday, to discuss what portion would want to take out of capital to put towards this project, how much to borrow, and use that, parts of that to pay it back, as well as hopefully with increased millage as well, combining those efforts.
And I just also want to say thank you for coming and explaining about the library, and we do appreciate everything that the library does, especially for the younger kids, who it does help them get acquainted with books and learn to read at an early age.
Thank you so much, Carol. We find that a lot of parents, too, that are afraid to come out, these times are tough politically. Oftentimes, they feel more comfortable coming to the library than they do coming to the school.
And I don't really remember, I know that part of what we, what came about when it was voted down before was the cost of the administration, which Ann has already talked about. And then, I believe, Jeff, weren't we, were we talking about, was it legally, were we able to legally do it?
And there's, there's, there's one more. So the first step would be, and I think you hit it on the head, if the board is interested in pursuing this, the first thing that would happen would be, we'd be engaging with our solicitor's office, Jeff, and his team in order to figure out, we know that it is legal back in 1990-ish, and we have to figure out, with all the changes of laws and the way schools are treated now, are there any changes to the law that makes it so that we can or cannot do that? And the library has offered, originally it was to pay for the solicitor's office time, but now they are offering to pay for my team's time as well. And, you know, and that is very, very generous. The second, or the third concern is just, and I'm just going to take 10 seconds, I think this is sort of the same conversation as when my daughter and my wife kept on bringing up shelter dogs to me and saying, how can you be against, you know, picking one of these shelter dogs and bringing them home? I feel like I'm, you know, arguing against a shelter dog in this conversation. But the, the third concern was that, in general, districts receive a benefit when they borrow money of less than $10 million each year. It's called bank qualified. And originally, I had less concern about that because frankly, I thought that there was a great ability for us to create this transaction in 2018, back when we first talked about it. I'm less convinced. Um, I'm less convinced now that we are going to be able to, which means that there is a high likelihood that this transaction will occur in two thousand and nineteen. And if we borrowed a million and a half dollars, it's, um, it's the district borrowing the money, uh, with promises from the library to repay us, uh, but that would reduce by 1.5 million dollars any ability for the district to borrow money. Now, I'm not saying that we will. I am saying, however, as we discussed when, uh, Mr. Stoloff's question came up, uh, that there is the potential that the, uh, capacity study in the enrollment shows that we do need to react to increased enrollment at the elementary level, uh, with additional, uh, facility answers, um, and they may cost money. If we, uh, borrow money next year, that would basically just mean that either we're going to hi, pay a slightly higher interest rate, or we're going to have to borrow 8.5 million dollars, not 10 million dollars, next year. So, that's what it would mean.
And that amount, um, is possible to be adjusted as well. So, if we find that, you know, a million would be fine, but a million six isn't, that's why we're going to be talking with the, the financial advisor, see what makes the best plan for us as far as paying back the money. So, just doing the research is what we're asking, and we don't want anything, any harm to come of the school district by this. We want to help the school district. We're so thankful for all you do in collecting the taxes and helping us maintain. So, I, I know with the library code, there hasn't been any changes. A school is considered a municipality as far as collecting taxes, but doing the research on the bond is, is the piece that we would definitely need the solicitor for.
And I think the key here is whether or not, um, based on the additional information that Anne's provided, um, if enough, enough of us on the board are in agreement that it's a worthwhile thing to investigate further, look at the legal ramifications, uh, feasible for us to do it. Um, me personally, uh, based on kind of a better understanding of what, uh, the library's trying to accomplish, um, in particular with the Ambler branch, I mean, the way I look at it is, extends our reach, our impact, delivering early literacy services, ELL services, and other just community services to a portion of our population, I think that's underserved compared to other parts of our, uh, district. And so, it's a great way, I think, to, for us to expand our reach. So, um, I, I'm supportive of it, at a minimum supportive of us investigating it further, make sure that there aren't any, sort of, legal hurdles, um, us doing it. So, my two cents.
What'd he say?
I'll put in my two and add four to that.
All right.
You want to have a show of hands, or just, uh, or just a nod of the head? Wow.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I mean, I, I would say-
I think we're good. I think we got the sentiment of the board, and, uh, we will proceed to the next stage, which is, um, uh, Jeff, uh, and, and we will start, uh, proceeding, at least to figure out whether it's viable and, uh, legal, uh, and as soon as we get that answer, we'll bring it back to the board.
Thank you so much.
And, uh, also, when you do figure out with your financial planner what that number is, sooner we know that than-
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. That concludes the finance committee report.
Great, thanks, David. Next up is the policy committee, Carol.
Thank you. Tonight's policies on the agenda are for the second reading. We discussed these at the September Public Works Session. Um, no changes have been made since the first readings were approved on October the first. The, um, policies that we discussed at the October Policy Committee meeting are as follows, and these are up for first reading at the next meeting, which would be November five. Okay. Uh, the first policy was the student representation, and this is minor word changes, and mostly it's from changing the word pupil to the word student. And the second policy is seven twelve, and that's workplace safety, and mostly that is changing wording to this existing policy to clarify that this policy pertains to employee work safety programs and not to the district's school security program. The next policy is child abuse, and it's number eight oh six. Updates to this existing policy are needed in order to comply with recent legislation provisions. Other wording changes are being made as well as to help make the policy stronger and clarify its intent. The next policy that we discussed at the October meeting was the transportation, and it's number eight ten. Updates to this existing policy are being recommended to include standard legal provisions that apply to the district's transportation program. And the last policy that we discussed this month is nine one seven point one, and it's Title One Parent and Family Involvement. Changes are recommended to this existing policy to bring it up to date and into compliance with all recent legal requirements pertaining to the federal Title One program. Uh, that's, that is my report. And our next, our next meeting is, our next policy meeting is October the twelfth, and I guess then we'll be discussing November, November the twelfth, sorry. And we'll be discussing the calendar policy.
Carol, I just want to, uh, state that, uh, I appreciate the, the little summary document that goes along with the revised policies. I mean, that's very helpful, at least for me.
You're welcome.
I know it's hard to tell what, what the big picture is when you're looking through the, the edited policies.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I know that, uh, you and the policy committee are taking on a lot this year, and, uh, they've been putting in a lot of time and effort in revising the policy, so thank you and the committee for, so far. Okay, and I think, uh, next up, we have report of the personnel director.
Uh, excuse me, there, uh, the IU report? Oh, no, there doesn't seem to be a slot for it.
Oh, yeah, it's coming. Um, yeah, Ron, it's after, it's right after, uh, the personnel report, it'll be there. So, uh, report of the personnel director, Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Antonio. There's one informational item, um, that's on the agenda for this evening. It's the list, uh, from the STS service, it's Substitute Teacher Service Guest Teacher Listing for the eighteen nineteen school year. We did this recently, um, for our contracted transportation services, and this is, um, just a requirement that the district has to inform the board. Uh, our voting items will be, um, under K one through four, um, including our normal approval of, um, items under K one. K two will be the approval of additions to salary degree status changes for eighteen nineteen. That will conclude, um, that, those items for this school year. Uh, number three is the update to the volunteer list for eighteen nineteen, and then lastly, the approval of the new substitute teacher staff additions for the eighteen nineteen school year, and that's going to be document K four.
Thank you. Um, item fourteen is a report of board representatives. And, and Ron, with the restructuring of the agenda, in essence, what we did was we took a handful of these, um, committees where we serve as representatives, and kind of split them off in their own group, mainly because they don't typically have any voting-related items, so they're kind of grouped together here. So, with that extracurricular, any, Tracy? Anything to report with the extracurricular committee? MCIU Board of Directors, there was no meeting this month, the next meeting will, their next, uh, Board of Directors meeting will be next month. MCIU Legislative Committee?
Okay, uh, Pat and I were at the, at the meeting, and there was a tremendous, uh, flurry as the, uh, legislature shut down for the, uh, for the year, uh, pre-election. And, uh, one of the things would, uh, probably light up the heart of, uh, our, uh, past member Tiffany, and there is a, uh, there's a increased focus on the attention, the idea of later start for high schools. It seems to be, uh, gaining momentum and increased, uh, research, uh, around the country. And then, of course, uh, whenever we talk about this, the, uh, the, the shift in everything else that would be changed because of this, and it's, it's still a, a process and, uh, and, uh, discussion. Also, uh, uh, we know we are, uh, as we spend most of our time on finance, uh, we are obviously not the only one in, in the state. Uh, there are, uh, districts in, uh, in lower, uh, lower and upper Montgomery County that, uh, have aging facilities and are, uh, basically, uh, beating their heads against the wall, trying to figure out where they're going to get the money, uh, to, uh, pay for, uh, repairs, uh, replacements of their facilities, and, uh, uh, the term was used, they are flirting with insolvency. Then, uh, there is a, uh, one of the major changes was high school graduation, uh, requirements other than the Keystone exams. And it has required that the, uh, this is an act that was just signed by Wolf, uh, requires the Department of Education to establish guidance related to those alternatives for schools, teachers, and students. And, uh, also, another major change, a change in the way that, uh, the Sunshine Bill, uh, affects open meetings for studies of, uh, school security. Uh, these do not have to be in public sessions, they can be discussed in executive session, uh, for obvious reasons. It doesn't, uh, you don't want to discuss your security, uh, where everyone can hear. Also, another change that affects us is, uh, especially the elementary school, a new law, uh, has modified the grade spans for special education teachers and early childhood education, uh, instructional certifications beginning in December of twenty twenty-one. Not tomorrow, but something that, uh, you, we could look forward to. And, uh, okay, I think that is, uh, about it, right? And then, of course, uh, the build, uh, that everyone has been concerned about, uh, the ability of students to, uh, apply their own sunshine, uh, sun lotion. And, uh, that has passed. I know we all feel, uh, very reassured now that that has passed. Uh, notes on what our legislature does. All right, that takes care of the IU.
All right, thanks, Ron. North Monco Technical Career Center, Ronnie or David?
November nineteenth, at seven PM.
Okay, um, now we're at the second public comment period, where we'll take comments from, on any school-related topics. I don't see any for tonight. So, we'll move on to board comment. Comments from my fellow board members, I believe Ron maybe?
Yes, uh, I have one, um, and I, I want to thank the board for supporting, uh, my, uh, attending the Pennsylvania School Board Association meeting, uh, a week or two ago in Hershey. Uh, it is, uh, an incredibly, uh, interesting and, uh, informative session, and I want to, I want to thank, uh, our, our fearless secretary for arranging all the, uh, all the travel and the documents and arrangements for that. Uh, give you some idea of what is going on, and I will once again, use my favorite expression, attending these things is, is like trying to drink out of a fire hose. One person cannot do this. More people have to attend these sessions. Uh, and, but something to look forward to, uh, as an idea, the, uh, National School Board Association will be meeting in March in Philadelphia, which will make it possible for our board members and, and administration as well to attend without, uh, a great deal of expense, except for what costs to get, uh, bicep to, uh, Center City. And to give you an idea of, of some of the things that, uh, that, uh, some of the sessions that I attended, uh, the, let's see. I attended about ten sessions, and for every one I attended, there were five others that I would have liked to have attended. And, uh, it is something that, uh, that our board, uh, would really consider amass, uh, for our March meeting and also for next year at Hershey. It's, uh, it's not an exceedingly expensive, uh, session to attend, uh, and again, it will broaden your viewpoints. Uh, when we were talking about, uh, turf, I remember walking through the, uh, exhibitor area, and, uh, uh, I stopped at one of the booths, and the man was talking about, uh, various types of turf, and he knew about, uh, the Wesickin, though he did not know what that, this project. I have a bag at home with material about this. Uh, we've been talking about, uh, uh, security, uh, for the, uh, doors to the classrooms. And, uh, we, uh, a session that I attended, not this year, but last year, uh, had, uh, a relatively inexpensive device to secure doors, and this year, I saw another device that was even cheaper, so not necessarily, uh, as great. But the idea of seeing vendors, seeing ideas, so that when, uh, these issues come up before the board, you have some idea of what, uh, the, uh, the administrators of our school board are talking about, but we're just not, uh, standing there with our, uh, our thumb in our ear. It is a, uh, these sessions are of great value, and there is one idea that I haven't quite figured out, and this is something that we might consider for our insurance costs. One school district, uh, and I'm not a hundred percent, how this would work is something to consider, the idea that, uh, offer to our teachers a higher deductible insurance policy, but then pay half of it. And there might be a savings for the school board. The, the teachers would still get, uh, the, the same, uh, level of coverage, but it might save the board some money. It's something to look, uh, into, and there is at least one school district that I was, uh, that, using this method, and they're, uh, they started it last year, and it's very successful. But here's the idea, whether we adopt this or not, is another point, but it's the ability to sit down at lunch and talk to people from all over the state, and at the national, all the school board members all over the country, and to see what we have in common, what we have different, uh, the, uh, and the various approaches, so we are not just in our little bubble. Got to get out and see the world. You know, it's like, graduate. Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Uh, what's your call on ticket sales? I'm just kidding. And anyway-
I do not get kickbacks. I promise.
In all seriousness, I attended the PSBA conference last, last year, and, uh, it was, it actually was excellent. There was a lot of, um, very informative and thought-provoking, um, sessions and speakers, and, uh, it was, it was well worth the time that I spent, so, um, yeah.
And I, well, I'm saying that, and I, uh, I will be typing up my notes and distributing that to the entire, uh, uh, board, and, uh, so that, you know, you thought I talked a long time now, wait until you read.
But we could read at our own discretion.
Yeah. That's right.
Um, I did have two things I wanted to mention. Uh, first, you know, we would be remiss if we didn't mention, um, some of the things that happened recently with the synagogue shooting and the school shooting that happened in, uh, North Carolina today. Our thoughts and prayers go out to those families that are suffering through that. Um, but I wanted to end on a better note. Um, so I don't know how many of you are familiar, but one of my daughter's best friends, uh, is, plays Vanderbilt soccer. Their team, two games ago, secured the SEC Regional Championship. They play tomorrow for the SEC Championship, um, October thirtieth, it's on the SEC Channel. Her name's Maddie Elwell. Her sister is in the high school still, and from what I hear, is she also is a very good soccer player. But I, for one, will be watching that game tomorrow, and I invite everyone to watch one of our alumni, um, kick butt in soccer. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All those, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.[1797.76]